And the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public for which it stands. And universal, for liberty and justice for all.
Go call?
Commissioner Nelson?
Here.
Commissioner Spencer?
Here.
Commissioner Chaffin?
Here.
Commissioner Levine?
Here.
Excellent, thank you. So, orders of the day. Moving into oral communications.
No comment not related to anything on the agenda as of today.
Go right into the unfinished business workshop for Dave's Avenue Elementary School.
So tonight, we invited the Safe Routes to School. Forgive me, is there a... I keep saying group, but is it Safe Routes to School?
It's just Los Gatos, Montesereno, Safe Routes to School.
Okay, thank you. Here tonight, per your request from your last regular meeting, I put together a staff report that you received last week. And then in front of you is a PowerPoint presentation that we could not get to project today, and therefore you all have copies in front of you. So this brief PowerPoint is just to guide the discussion. There's a quick agenda with introductions, outcomes for this evening, what the planning process looks like for any kind of capital improvements near the Dave's Avenue School, issues, opportunities, and challenges with the site, visioning, priorities, and a wrap-up. So if we wanted to start with introductions, perhaps Megan or... If you'd like to start?
Yeah, so introduce myself or welcome our guests?
Yes.
Okay, so Karen, I'll head your way if you don't mind starting off the introductions.
I'm Karen Briones. I'm the Safe Routes to School Coordinator for the Los Gatos Union School District, and I'm Executive Director of Los Gatos, Montesereno, Safe Routes to School.
Thomas Cook, I'm the President of the nonprofit organization and one of the founders of the group about 12 years ago, and I work for Karen.
Can we introduce our public member?
Yeah, absolutely.
Why not?
Nicole?
My name's Nicole McCarty, and I'm the Director at Oak Tree Children's Club, which is at First Baptist, which is across the street from Dave's Avenue.
I'm Phil Levine. I guess I'm a Commissioner here, and most importantly, we've lived at the corner of Poppy and Vista for the last 22 years. Both of my daughters went to Dave's Avenue School. I've watched Susan Van Felton direct traffic for many years before she left. And so I'm real close to the community, and I was instrumental in getting that sidewalk on the side of Dave's when I first moved in. So it's an issue that's near and dear to my heart.
Hi, I'm Barry Chaffin. I'm the one member that's not in the Los Gatos School District. I'm in the Saratoga School District, so I'm not as intimate with these issues as everybody else is.
Megan Spencer, I'm a Commissioner and also a parent at Dave's and Fisher, and on the Safe Routes Committee at Dave's as well.
I'm Joanne Nelson. I'm one of the newly-elected Commissioners from, I guess, January, and I live off of Carl Avenue, so I'm familiar with the area.
And I'm Joanne Path. I'm newly-elected also. And I had five kids that went to Dave's, and one year they were all there together, so we had kindergarten skip first, but we had every other grade.
Eleven a place.
Huh?
Yeah, eleven a place.
Yeah. So fortunately, usually we walked, but then I worked at Fisher for a while, and I'm very aware of the traffic problems there. I worked on Highway 9 a lot, trying to get some pedestrian bicycle work done there, and yeah. Interested in figuring out what we can do to help you.
So the way I envisioned the outcomes for today was to identify some of the potential opportunities to improve the mobility at Dave's School. So that includes biking and walking, and obviously, traffic flow and the neighborhood community. Did anyone else have thoughts on outcomes for this evening?
What do you mean by the neighborhood community?
The surrounding streets. So the Dave's Avenue neighborhood, I'm sorry.
No, I just wasn't sure what you were doing.
So as far as the planning process goes from the city side for any kind of capital improvements, we started with tonight's meeting, which thank you for asking them to come today, and thank you for coming. And then between now and doing a community meeting in the fall, we would evaluate or study potential opportunities that we identified today that work for both the city and the district. Then we would have a community meeting, followed by some kind of project development, followed by identification of funding, whether that be grants or city-funded or school district-funded, or some kind of combination of all three. And then construction, yay. So for the issues, opportunities, and challenges, which I see as being the bulk of the discussion today, I included some of the priority issues included in the Safe Routes that were identified in the Safe Routes to School study completed last year. In front of half of you is the... Some of the road improvements that were recommended by that report. The left-hand turn lane, I think as we discussed before, was actually done last year as part of the city's pavement improvement project. But I don't think any of the other improvements in that report have been executed. I also included the heat map and the walk-and-roll maps in the PowerPoint that you have in front of you, and then also potential issues that we've identified here at the city with you, with staff, and also with the Better Streets Commission of issues that weren't identified in that report, but are issues, at least on our side. So Megan, if you would like to lead the discussion on...
So thank you, community members, because we definitely value your input on what you see, what you've experienced, and kind of thinking about what are some of the hotspot areas. And so I guess kind of opening it up to you guys, to our audience, public participants, if there are any particular areas that are of interest to you that you've identified, that you have experience with, that are on this list, or anything else that Jessica has presented, been in the meetings and probably reviewed, or are very knowledgeable about, in the report?
Well, from...
Can I ask a question? This is your list. Did you create this list? And if so...
The priorities list?
Yeah. And where did it come from? Just off the top of your head, or from a consultant, or...
Not off the top of our head. Though some days, I'm sure it feels that way. In 2016, the Town of Los Gatos commissioned a traffic study around all the schools within the Los Gatos Union School District and the Los Gatos-Saratoga Union High School District to assess the conditions of the streets and kind of come up with a list of projects that could facilitate active and alternative transportation to and from school. They did hire an outside consultant. He's a traffic engineer. He came in, him and his crew came in, and they assessed every single school site except for Lexington. Like, if you're not familiar with the school district, you can't walk or bike to Lexington School, so that's why it was not included in the study. Out of that study came the recommendations, which I think is what you kind of sent to the group. These were recommendations based on community feedback. They did community outreach at all the school sites. They did some, a little bit of surveying. They did their own traffic counts, their own observations. And so the recommendations that come up off of this list came out of that particular work. From there, Safe Routes to School sat down with our community members, our team of volunteers and stakeholders, and came up with a list of 12 to 15 items, I think is what we recommended to the town council. And some of those did include work here in Montesereno, which we know the town is separate than Montesereno, that would address issues around each of the school sites. To date, almost all of those have been done. Some of those are work that's been done on school district property. Those were all reviewed by our district leadership at the time and prioritized. So that's where that information comes from. Some of this has also just been longstanding issues. Traffic speed, bike safety, all those things are just longstanding issues that we hear about on an ongoing basis.
I've got kind of a question and comment before we get into the detail. Two things you mentioned, and I'll try to stay positive. You mentioned the word "community," but the community constitutes a church. It constitutes someone like myself, and all my neighbors around us, and it includes the retirement community. And I don't remember the district ever contacting the neighborhood beyond the school, which is part of the community, to get input. Maybe I'm wrong, but I talk to our neighbors. That's the first point. And the second, and I think that's critical, that we value the school district, but those of us who've been living in the neighborhood for 20 to 30 years, it watches stuff every day. We've been through three, four principals. We've seen parents come and go. I think you've done a great job, and I think you need to expand on what you perceive as being the community, at least, that's my perception. The second point that I'd like to make, and this is getting into the weeds a little bit, is your definition of what the neighborhood is. And I think one of the key issues, which I'd like to go over later, is the exclusion of Bruce Avenue. Just having lived there a lot, the safe walks to school doesn't take into account Bruce Avenue. As far as I can tell, it's not included, and I think that's a real issue in the Dave's Avenue, because if you look at your map, if I'm reading it correctly, you've got people walking down the side of Winchester, and they cut in on Dave's. In reality, the second highest way into Dave's Avenue is down Bruce and hanging it right on Poppy. I see that every day. So I guess one of the things when you do an engineering study or whatever, is you've got to define what the system is. And I think it's, maybe I'm misreading the map, but I think it's critical you include Bruce in the consideration, because that is probably the second highest input into the neighborhood. And by not including it, I don't think you're... I don't think you're taking into account all the, you know, all the factors involved. And again, that might be a result of not talking to the people that lived on Bruce for so long, but that's just my perception.
I can comment on Bruce Avenue. Bruce Avenue has no sidewalks, and I understand it's one of those kind of strange areas that kind of skirts both Montesereno and Los Gatos. So those routes were largely designed to keep kids on sidewalks. So these routes that you see on the walk-and-roll, they're suggested routes. That by no means are we saying that that's the only way. And again, it's up to the parents for those kids to decide the best route to go. So I think that's kind of where that comes from.
It's really important.
And I think that our community, that the members of the school that provided input, the parents did at that time, I don't know if that... I didn't conduct those community meetings, so I don't know if they provided input saying, hey, this is a safe route or not. They did have some input and review, so that was part of that. I do agree with you that the community isn't just the school community.
We're great people. Don't get me wrong, and the perception's different, but it's a bigger group.
It's just, it takes a lot to kind of get to this point. It's taken, like Thomas said, we've been at this for 12 years, and this study happened a number of years ago. So every time we move along, we learn another group we need to connect with. So going forward, that gives us an opportunity to reach out to a broader section of the community.
As far as the city goes, Bruce is a straight shot. It's Montesereno solid from San Benito down to Poppy, and then it is Los Gatos. Unlike Poppy, by the way, which is mixed match is where I live, so it's reasonable. And it's a really high-volume traffic area. I think we'd be foolish not to consider it. I just throw it out on the street. So there were counts made, and I was involved in those. So there was a legion of volunteers that went out and counted all the bicyclists and all the walkers. So there was extensive study done in all these major intersections. So there was a volume calculated how many kids travel through those areas to and from school. There were also at least one, but I think two, community meetings set up at Dave's to discuss this over a year ago. And they were up several hours each night, and I participated in one of those as well. So there was, I don't know the magnitude of the effort made to engage the greater community. Our focus has been on kids' safety and the school, and I think people in the town were involved at whatever kind of outreach needed to happen during that time. But this isn't just made up out of thin air. There was extensive study and a lot of money spent, you know, calculating this, so... I just wanted to... I've got a pretty good connection with my neighbors, and they just don't... I tell them about it, and it's part of it's their fault, my fault, but part of it's they kind of shrug their shoulders. And I think you really, you know, those of us that yell at the cars going too fast and try to slow them down and watch them run stop signs, there's a lot of value there, and I'm not saying what you're doing is incorrect, but just the church, for example, is critical.
Yep. Well, Phil, I'm going to jump in, because I also think, I think that's the purpose of tonight, is to...
Well, that's why I mentioned it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and to figure out how we can then, I think, reposition ourselves in thinking about, we know we want to have a community meeting after this, right? We know that that's a really, that is a valuable part of our process. And the first part was to see, what are you, you know, what's happening at the school? What's their insight? What is the church's, you know, because they're directly connected to the school through programming? What's happening there, and how would they, what insight might they provide us about who they're in touch with on Bruce and Poppy, and who's coming in from different schools, from the different neighborhoods? Because I think that will better inform us about what we can do to support Bruce and Poppy. And I think it's on the forefront of our mind.
It's critical. It's not a nice-to-have, I guess is my point.
So in thinking about that, because I think, I mean, all of these speed, driver awareness, they have an impact on Poppy, on Bruce, on Dave's, on Cavan, on Carl, on, what is it, Via Pole? It's a Via, one of the Vias that's a cut-through because they have a stop sign. All the guys up there. So I'm curious if, I mean, I know, in kind of looking at all the different priority, the possibilities, Poppy has consistently been something that's been discussed at the school on the Safe Routes to School, trying to figure out how to best make safety, make a safe passage for kids and cars along Poppy, and figuring out the drive-through situation there. Now I have a giant drive-through image in front of me. But I think it would be interesting for us to kind of talk about what, you know, out of these Poppy, Dave's Avenue, and Cavan intersection there, have you had a chance to explore it, you know? Do we know, do we have experience, bike safety? Do we see kids biking? Where are they coming from? What is, you know, what investment has the school made?
So I can speak a little bit to the school side, just because I work for the school district, and we work closely with our Director of Maintenance and Operations. So this past, last summer, summer of 2018, Dave's Avenue was slated for their regular resurfacing of their parking lot. And in the process, Neil, our Director, comes through and asks for any changes that kind of come out of comments from the staff. Now, this is information that's happening actually on district property. So the staff recommended limiting parking along the Poppy side to staff-only to kind of ease up some bottlenecks there and some traffic flow there. And hopefully try to increase student safety with fewer cars going through there. Kids have to actually exit the car on the wrong side. So that seems to be pretty well-received, from my understanding, based on what the principal... That's the other thing, is that we're on our third principal in four or five years, something like that. And it's hard to enact a lot of change when you have that much turnover. They've also kind of upgraded some of the striping along the Dave's Avenue side. Some of the recommendations that you see on the large-print thing here have been actually done on the surface of the parking lot, arrows. There'll be a new crosswalk installed by the kindergarten area this coming summer to facilitate moving our youngest students into the, what I call, "kinderland" over there. A few years ago, we had a couple of Safe Routes to School volunteers that were really gung-ho to get additional bike racks onto our campuses. So through a Bay Area Air Quality Management District grant, we put 25 bike racks across the community on our school sites between Los Gatos Union Schools and Los Gatos High School. And so there's additional bike racks on that campus. So I think there's been a lot done over there. With the changeover in leadership over the last few years, outreach and education, while the education's continued, we still do bike rodeos, we do pedestrian education, we do helmet presentations, encouragement days. We're hoping that with some consistent leadership there on campus, that we'll have consistent outreach and messaging going out. Infrastructure's phenomenal, but without the education and outreach and instruction, it's really difficult, along with the enforcement of our law enforcement. So those are some of the things that have been going on, actually, at Dave's Avenue for quite some time.
Do I remember correctly that the Poppy side of the parking area, that was delayed in anticipation of possibly working with the city on fine-tuning the road?
So, yeah, that was. So they resurfaced the Dave's side and not the Poppy side, so that's a little off their schedule. This summer, that side will be paved, covered to keep up with the regular maintenance. However, they were marked as staff-only last summer by our district staff to facilitate that pilot. And again, it seems to be pretty well-received. What we've been told is that the cost of that repaving is, in the grand scheme of things, if there's an additional project that comes along, the odds are it's not going to happen within a year. We understand that. That that cost is something that the school district was willing to absorb at this stage of the game to kind of, to maintain their regular maintenance.
A maintenance issue or a safety issue, or both?
It's usually both. Yeah. Though our, that regular schedule kind of keeps them on that regular maintenance schedule, keeps them on their regular safety schedule, too.
And the purpose for shifting the Poppy side for the school was to alleviate some of the tension and stress that occurs during morning drop-off and pickup, where people are trying to, if you have the map in front of you, are trying to enter the school. Two lines of traffic are trying to enter a somewhat narrow driveway, and they're coming and crossing, sorry my throat, two crosswalks, especially on the Poppy side. You have to cross over a crosswalk and then do a U-turn and cross over another crosswalk. And so the school requested that the maintenance re, hold off on doing the overlay, but turning these into staff parking, so that we would limit the number of cars who were coming through the Poppy line, potentially, by dropping off and parking and trying to encourage people to use this one because of the concern...
Oh, they'd be filled up with teachers versus some...
Versus parents backing out, you know, people backing out and dropping their, you know, coming in. There was a lot of movement. And it's just not a safe, it doesn't feel as a safe of a place to do, to have lots of kids in this area. And so that is the first one on the list of kind of priority issues that I, that the school has consistently, in the meetings that I've attended, talked about, what are we going to do about Poppy? We're very concerned. Because at least Dave's has some kind of organization to it. A few issues here and there to address, but this bottleneck right here, and cars coming head-on, or cars trying to get into the driveway but wanting to go to this parking lot, which happened a lot beforehand, the main parking lot, there's still cars who are coming north on Poppy, taking a right and trying to go into the parking lot, crossing over into the other line of traffic. So they're just, the school had a lot of concerns about how can they manage that situation? And it's a shared responsibility, because it's cars coming off from the city and not knowing how to best mitigate some of the safety issues. And the dual crosswalk, of having a crosswalk right here, and then the kids crossing again, so encountering cars two times, so...
We haven't done car counts this year. That's on, it's the mad dash to the end of the school year for us right now. But when I've been out there in the mornings, for a few mornings in the last few weeks or so, definitely there's, I think there's less traffic along the Poppy side than there used to be, maybe at this time last year, despite the rain.
I think it's gotten better. It feels like it still needs improvement. I think it's gotten better.
Yeah. That, and in addition to the...
Yeah, it's gotten better.
To have at least one, to feel like one small change.
It's having an impact.
Had an impact.
And then this, with our new superintendent and our new principal there, just the staff presence has been huge. Having the school staff out there on the property, helping to facilitate traffic flow and reminding parents about safety.
So in the safety vein, and since Nicole's here, because this, we're talking about crosswalks, and there is a crossing guard here, I know that crossing guards and the crosswalk situations, more of, I don't know what the solution is, but more of having an open conversation about how can, you know, what's the current situation with crossing guards? Because they do provide the first line of safety as kids are, there are kids who are walking and biking to school. I'm curious.
And who's ultimately responsible for making that happen?
The crossing guards?
Yeah.
So the crossing guard program is, many years was a joint effort between the Los Gatos Union School District and the Los Gatos, Montesereno PD. It was just recently, through the renegotiation, it's being paid for largely by Los Gatos Union School District and the Police Department. The Police Department actually manages it, so it's, they're the ones that are the first contact, so to speak. If a crossing guard doesn't show up, usually I hear about it, and then I contact the police. Or sometimes our school sites actually directly contact the Police Department and let them know that a crossing guard isn't there.
I mean, Nicole, Nicole, I mean, I was kind of, my jaw dropped. Nicole came and gave a great presentation, and God bless her, she goes out and she helps the kids across the school, across the street. I mean, I'm biased, but I remember when Susan Van Felton was there, to heck with the rules, to heck with who's responsible, she'd get out there and she'd make the thing happen. And I don't, it sounds like it's caught in bureaucracy or something, or am I wrong? She shouldn't, God bless her for doing it, but she shouldn't be doing it. There should be a principal that gets an ulcer worrying about it every morning, and they call a business manager or something.
I think there is a principal that gets an ulcer worrying about it every morning. I have to be honest with you, the amount of, the amount of communication I've had with Jenna Middleman, our principal there. They contract, the Town of Los Gatos contracts out with All Cities Management, I think is the name of the company, and they provide the crossing guards within, at the locations around the school sites. So every year, we do take feedback at the end of the year. I usually get feedback, and I pass that along to the Police Department, though they've received all the feedback, a lot of feedback already this year, and understanding that some of the crossing guards have been kind of difficult to manage this year. And that's sometimes just, unfortunately, what we end up with.
Labor market scenario, yeah.
Yeah. It's just a function of that. It's still a very valued program and something that I think is still very much needed. Dave's Avenue is quite fortunate that they have four crossing guards that service their school. Most of the school sites only have two, so this is a, but there's a lot of crosswalks here that are not managed by lights that enter the school site. So currently, that's kind of where we stand. I know that there's been a lot of concern about the crossing guard along Dave's Avenue there in front of the church. But they've been trying to work with, Police Department's been trying to work with the company.
I mean, if I was a manager, I'd call whoever signed that contract, I'd call the manager up, and I'd have him come over every morning, and he does that twice, and then he'd make the thing happen. I mean, she shouldn't be, she shouldn't be doing the job. God bless her, but she shouldn't be doing the job.
I can pass that feedback along, but that's, I don't manage that program. I just facilitate the messaging to the Police Department.
But the principal who gets the ulcer, is she getting on the phone and pushing it?
The staff over there at Dave's Avenue, I think, calls the crossing guard company on a routine basis. There's active communication between the school, that particular school site, and the crossing guard company, along with the Police Department. So everybody's well-aware of the situation.
Is there a backup plan for when someone does not show up, besides you having to go out and do it, or what? I mean, because it has to happen at other...
From my understanding, again, I don't manage it, from my understanding, is there just aren't substitute crossing guards available. It's a small, it's a small community with a few crossing guards. And so most of those crossing, you know, a lot of the crossing guard labor force, if that's what you want to call it, is employed by other communities that have larger programs going.
So the Police Department doesn't kick in, or the school doesn't kick in?
This Police Department, if there's an officer available, and they find out in time, can. But often what happens, from what I hear, when I hear about it, it's usually at 8:00 in the morning. And by the time the police officer, even a community service officer can get over here, it's kind of late in the game. Sometimes they know ahead of time, and then the police tend to send somebody over in that situation. But sometimes, we had a crossing guard all along Kennedy Avenue that didn't show up for three weeks, and nobody knew. But sometimes, we had a crossing guard along Kennedy Avenue that didn't show up for three weeks and nobody knew about it. I don't drive down that way. It's not my responsibility. The Police Department also kind of needs the help of finding out, you know, can you please let us know? But it turned out that we had a crossing guard that had a difficulty getting to his job and then they worked with him to resolve that issue. So there's a lot that goes into managing that program.
I just had this nightmare of some kid getting hit and the district lawyer and the, the Los Gatos Police Lawyer, and all these people spend all their time arguing about who's ultimately responsible, but the problem's still there. That there's more concern about the man, who's responsible from a legal standpoint rather than Susan Van Felton getting out and saying to heck with it and getting the job done anyway like she does. And I guess that's what I'm
Well, and I think, I think we need to give our current principal the opportunity to step up to the game. She's come into a new community and she's learning about what works and what doesn't work. So she's been on the job for a year, so I think she's well aware of the situation. She's come up to speed quite quickly. It's been really working with us.
Having staff out there is not, I don't think, I don't know if they can send.
School district, school district has their responsibilities and we've been instructed to not send our staff out onto city streets.
Said the lawyers would be, everybody would be
You'd have to take that up with the school district.
Yeah, I know, but the, the bottom line is the kid's got to be protected if someone like her gets out and does it. Anyway, I'm allergic to bureaucracy.
This is something that would be good for us to follow, follow up on, I think, just as either individuals, citizens, if we know, just to check in with Nicole or see if there's another way as a, you know, what we can do to support the district in that aspect. Going back to kind of what, kind of our purpose for today and thinking about projects, because if we can projectize something and get money, we can, you know, have the city move forward on something that, that will have an impact on traffic flow and circulation. And thinking about, so we've kind of talked about poppy. The Dave's and Cavan Lane intersection is in, yes, Nicole?
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
So, forget the crossing guards, you already, you've already heard my discussion on the crossing guards the last time. You've, I think the education, I totally agree with education. I had a conversation with two moms last Thursday. I'm basically provoked from me because I had, I got to play crossing guards, I always like to say, because they didn't show up. But it was basically, I had two conversations and I would say, I think education wise for kid's safety is very well. What you said was, you basically, you work, you guys work really well and I, I agree. Like, I know just here at the beginning of May, there was the Bike Safety Day. There was those kinds of things, remember, you wear your helmet, you work really well with parents of reminding your kids to, you know, ride safely or walk safely to school and those kinds of things. I think the thing that all of us, whether it's myself or any of us as adult drivers, we are not doing so well at, is educating our parents to drive safely. Every, anybody that I talk to around the school, parents, whether it be eight o'clock in the morning or two thirty in the afternoon, they don't care. They're in a hurry. I want to get to where I want to go. And they, and because one mom, one of the moms told me, she said, as soon as the staff leaves to go in at eight ten, everything breaks loose and there are no rules and the cars are going berserk and nobody cares what any rules are and the flow of traffic is now crazy. And she said, she goes, I know I'm running two minutes before school starts and everybody now is like, I'm going to be late and I got to get there. But she said, but we need to then be, I know that I need to be, but I can't, I can't worry about if my kid is going to be a little late. I need to be aware that it really is the safety of the kids. Because at this point now, it's the safety of the kids. It's not really about me getting to work, me getting to, back to, to my house. It really is, I have, there are five hundred students at Dave's Avenue or there's six hundred students at Blossom Hill, however many kids. Doesn't matter what school district, school I'm at. You've got kids that are there and it really, wherever, whatever vehicle I'm in, there's safety of these kids. And the drivers are not, that stop sign, I sit in front of that stop sign every afternoon and I couldn't tell you how many people run that stop sign. How many people, and it's not just, and it's not just parents, it's literally people that live all the way up Dave's. And they, I watched somebody this week, literally, she didn't even stop. She didn't even slow down. She just drove right through it. And I was like, there are kids here. There is a crossing guard standing there. They don't care. So I'm just saying, I think we do a good job of teaching and training and educating our kids because we have, we have their attention, right? They're at school. But I think somehow, if we could educate and remind our adult drivers.
Educate and enforce and sometimes they go together.
Yes, yes.
It's not only remind.
And I know that's not your job. That's not, I'm not saying that's your job, because it's not your job. But I think, in general, all of us.
You're, you're absolutely right and I could, I could, when, when you have a public hearing, I will bring in neighbors. I was talking to one the other day about how she's very outspoken, she's shy and outspoken like myself, that she gets the finger from a lot of the drivers in the morning and she gets in the yelling matches with these folks and they're determined to be on time and she, she's pretty outspoken like myself, I'm being facetious. But it happens on poppy and, you know, you hear the policeman's like, oh, everything's around the right speed and the neighbors do not believe it. And we can get you that input. And I, I think the other thing to mention, you're absolutely right on the education, but it's to design a road system that facilitates slower driving through clever engineering, however that may be. It's just, it's one thing to remind them and educate them. It's another thing to have an environment that facilitates safer driving and that's why we have smart engineers helping us.
Yes, and some of the things from the report were also some, some potential, so for example, the LED stop signs. You know, I think that that's something, some kind of signage, because we, we can't put all the parents at Dave's in a room and say, let's all learn about traffic safety right now. I wish, I wish we could do that at back to school night, but they want to be with their kids. And, you know, what are some mechanisms that we can support implementing throughout this, this area that are consistent reminders that, educational reminders of the behavior that we desire to see? So the LED stop sign, I know we, that was in the report, I think, around the Dave's crosswalk. So a stop sign that flat that lights up. Because I know right now, when I exit, we put, last summer, I think we put the sign up that reminds people that there's a crosswalk to the right, which is nice, but you do get up to the stop sign and then it's actually set right behind you. So both thinking about how to help people exiting to take the right and then helping people who are actually passing through the stop sign. If the, you know, is that, is that a viable option for us? Is that something that we can say, wow, as a city, we would really, again, get behind making sure that we have, moving forward on that?
Sounds relatively cheap and quick to me. I don't know what the downside would be.
Now, are there the radar feedback school zone signs like, you know, there on Blossom Hill, are those up along?
They don't have on Dave's and I believe that when, I don't know if it was Kalipo spoke with us last time. One of the police officers spoke with us and said it's, that's a tricky place to put the, I think, the speed because of the stops, because of the, the turn on, from Winchester and there's a street. So chunking it, I think it would be difficult to figure out the speed because people kind of
Up, down.
Yeah, it's, yeah, at least on that stretch. Now, coming back from, what is it, Highway nine down Dave's, there's one stop sign at Via, Via P. But there isn't, which is the second, I think, the, actually, one of the other, the second one on the list, at Cavan. There isn't a stop sign there. And, you know, is that something that would enable or encourage and force people to slow down because there's an additional stop sign?
So are you saying there's not a stop sign at Cavan and Dave's Avenue?
Cavan and Dave's?
Is that correct? Okay, I'm just trying to make sure.
There's not, because there's, there's one here.
Right, so there's
There's not one here.
There's not one, yeah, it's at Palace Verdes. Sorry, that's where the stop sign is.
There's one at Palace Verdes, but not at Cavan.
Right, not at Cavan. Because that's actually where I do my drop off.
For you.
Palace Verdes. Because there's a sidewalk, there's a stop sign, so my kids can get out, get onto the sidewalk and walk safely then.
So how did you figure it, because when I look at this from a big picture thing, that's my thing, is you're going to have all these cars in here and we're trying to get them to flow and do safely and not hit kids and encourage kids to get on their bikes and stuff. But if I'm a parent, I want to know that I can drop my kid off somewhere and they'll get there safely, right? And so you've figured it out. And there are other places, you know, like you could drop them off on Winchester, kind of by the city lot that's on Winchester. And I've seen the private schools actually do that. They meet there and they carpool in the morning, earlier. And they could walk and they'd be bike, you know, crossing guards and they would never have to cross the street. So how did you figure that out and?
So.
With others?
Yeah, I mean, I think a part of the, I was encouraged by safe routes to really try to find an alternative and to get away from the traffic.
And are there others that do that?
Not that I, I have not met any, any other friends who do that, but I've been doing a lot of research on these ideas of kind of drop off points for schools and they actually have lots of really great signs. And community, it has to be community, city involvement because it's signage on city streets and safety. But I don't know exactly what all that entails, so that would be a good thing for us to.
We see lots of people park their car on Vista, which is right across from my house, and they'll walk the, they'll park their car, they'll walk the child over around the school and then they'll go back and they'll
But this is like blocks away.
Yeah, you're
Which would be really, but there are some really, there's some potentially great places that I do know people walk from.
Then you keep the cars from even getting into the situation for their frustration, for their hitting kids or whatever.
Yeah, but I think that, to me, that I would love to see, I think it would be really cool for us to
Do a pilot program like on that.
Do some kind of, the villa, it's like Walk Your Village. I can't remember what the name of
Meet Your Villages are, are kind of, kind of get to know your neighbors so that you will walk and, or bike or as your kids get older, maybe they'll do those things together. Blossom Hill has had a pretty successful drop, we call them drop spots, drop spot idea to keep kids, keep cars off of the campus. Fisher, there's, we really encourage that. I was, as I was mentioning at our Safe Routes to School meeting this morning, because Megan was there. When the bridge over Highway seventeen was shut down in the one direction due to the unfortunate mishap and they were repairing it, a lot of parents were dropping off by Basona and the kids were walking up and they still continue to do that. It's a very, it's a very effective way and kids that do walk in that way, we consider them pedestrians because we keep a car off of our campus.
You know, before I forget about it, I saw, I think it was CNN, they were doing something, I think it was either Dallas or Fort Worth. They were trying to encourage what you're talking about. I forgot the exact term, but they called it a virtual school bus. And what it was, it was parents with a vest and they got groups of parents, the parents would have the socialization, which is a really big thing around Dave's. I see it and it's great. But they'd break the kids and they'd have some scheduled time and they'd basically herd a bunch of kids to the school. I don't know if that's possible, but they said, gee, that's kind of a neat idea.
We kind of let that grow organically for us. Those programs are called walking school buses. In our communities, it's been pretty kind of organically grown, wouldn't you say, Thomas? And recently with the Meet Your Village, the whole idea behind that with Safe Routes to School is that we had some parents and some of our volunteers that really wanted to encourage their neighbors to walk or ride. And they said, how do I do this? And we talked about, they need to get to know you. So it's kind of getting to meet the individuals that you live with. That's, I used to carpool and my kids walked and biked with neighbors. There were seven kids in the neighborhood that all went together. So kind of making those connections. And again, to Nicole's point about education, it's the education and the outreach, so, yeah. But interesting to figure out where to put those stop signs.
The one that was mentioned in the report, which I, which, one of the places where my neighbor gets the finger from drivers is the corner of Bruce and Poppy, which I think was referenced. That is one that's run quite a bit. It doesn't have the volume of the one you mentioned, but
Right.
That would be one, I think it's, I think it's one of the ones suggested.
All right.
They just go around that corner and don't stop.
Has the Police Department ever?
Oh, I've seen them there. Every time I talk to them, they say everything's fine and the mileage is good and all the neighbors look at each other and we roll our eyes. But, but, you know, I, I don't, yeah, you see them, they try, they try, they try. But it's, it's hard. It's, it's really hard. I mean, they're limited and they do their best. I think you got to design, you got to design an environment which facilitates the speed. I really believe that.
I'm not going to, I'm not taking away from poppy again. I'm so sorry. But I look forward to, again, I think having community input. I would love to know what they, since we have school members here, I would love to continue to kind of probe and just see what other, what are some considerations? What are some things that we should, as a commission, think about? And then absolutely when we get
I, I think it's critical that they remember, I'm sorry, that they remember that there's a community surrounding the school. I'm sorry to keep on talking about that, but it, it's a huge part of the, it's a huge part of it. It's a, it's a true partnership.
And I would also say, I think there are people on Palace Verdes who are very upset about speeding. So, because if I, I have noticed that when I'm dropping my kids off, that there are many people who cut down Vinland around the school traffic, cut down Palace Verdes, take a right and then fly up Dave's with all the kids who are now walking on the newly improved curve, which is really nice because there's a widen space for kids to walk there. But people are zooming down here and then heading down Dave's out to Highway nine.
So they come up Vinland to Palace Verdes?
So they come up Vinland, take the left on Palace Verdes. And then
Yeah.
So
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, I, I've just heard from maybe one or two people mentioning.
I've heard, I've heard the same thing. I'm sure you're right.
So I don't have any solutions to address speeding on Palace Verdes, but that would be important for us to, you know, in the community meeting, make sure that we send, make an, you know, send communication to them to let them know that we, we under, you know, understand that there's, they might have concerns. But for now, Cavan potentially could have a stop sign based on the report.
So Cavan, I was just going to say, is there similar complaints along Cavan about speeding also, or do people?
I have not heard from people, but I have seen trash cans. On some days of the week, the neighbors put their trash cans in the middle of the street. So you have to slow down.
That's on the Montessor, that's on the Montessorano side of Cavan.
They're in the middle of the street, so I'm not sure. Which side of?
Well, no, no, no.
I said, more power to you because that
The part of Cavan, the part of Cavan behind us is Los Gatos. That's why I asked, the, it's
It's, sorry, it's the one in between where people would cut between Vinland and Dave's.
Yeah, that's, that's Montessorano.
Yeah, over here.
It's a dead end.
You can't get any Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't help.
Doesn't matter, that's why I asked.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the cut through.
They could cut their road off and we would, the commuters would be okay.
Yeah.
But yeah, people put their trash cans out here to slow traffic down. Or they, or sometimes they, people have signs, no parking in front of their, very large signs, no parking in front of certain parts of their yard. So it's a used street for both parents overflow, I think, sometimes people park there, but also for cut through.
So the, the stop sign that's currently at Palace Verde and Dave's, is that a three-way stop there then? Or is it just Palace Verdes has a stop?
It's a four-way stop, because even Oak, Oak Knoll, yeah. But people come very quickly down Dave's to stop and my kid, they carpool, so I take four kids to school in the morning. Sorry, I've done a lot of research. And the kids have said the past few weeks that they've been very scared of cars who are coming down Dave's very quickly and not completely coming to a stop there. So it makes them a little nervous when they get to the, get to the stop sign.
Is that the stop sign at Palace Verdes?
And then how far is it to Cavan?
It's a block.
One block, yeah, it's just one block.
Would they even put another stop sign a block down?
I, so I wonder that, but they put it in the report as actual the engineers thought it was a possibility.
It would certainly slow, slow traffic down probably.
Yeah, you'd be just
Would there be community backlash for that?
I don't, I, having, I honestly don't know. I know when they did all the stop signs on Twin Creek, there was a lot of bitching about too many stop signs. I just, just, I, I don't know. I think it's something to bring up in the community meeting. I, I just don't know.
And the pedestrian safety there is it for the kids that are walking along Dave's already or are kids crossing, do you think, at Cavan? Coming, and they wouldn't cross. They'd actually either make a
There are, I think that's where the sidewalk ends. Is that's, or starts, is right here on the northeast side of of the intersection. There's no sidewalk here. There's no sidewalks along these streets. I believe the sidewalk does, it starts somewhere around here, but there's no crosswalk. So even though there's a stop sign, there's no like pedestrian friendly marking, so the kids just walk down to poppy and then cross with that cross, crossing guard. That's how the other families who walk further up come down there. But I've noticed a lot of families coming out from Oak, Oak Knoll area who come walking down.
And they're on sidewalk and they're on the right side of the street.
Now, do you do that for pickup in the afternoon too?
No, I don't do pickup in the afternoon. I can't
You're not our expert, right?
I'm so sorry. I was just curious. Afternoon pickup makes me anxious, so I handed it off to another parent.
The left turn lane, because I don't think I mentioned it the last time. The left turn lane, I think has helped this year, this particular school year. Because I sit there and watch all afternoon or during drop, during pickup in the afternoon. I do think, I mean, sometimes it, I mean, obviously at some point it will always back up, but it was because it has to, because there's so many cars. But it really does help with the flow because.
You mean Dave's to Poppy, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
That left turn, it actually keeps the flow and then the cars that want to keep going can go on the right. So I mean, that is one thing that has, I think, really helped Dave's this year. The flow of traffic at least.
It's improved, it's definitely improved, I agree.
So back to Dave's and Cabin, what are we gonna do with that then? Because it's recommended.
Cheap.
Maybe possible.
It's possible.
And does it need to be studied more? Does it need to be really looked at again?
I would float it at the community meeting. I just, my gut. My, my only concern, I, I don't have any problem. I mean, my only concern is you get to the point where you have some stop signs and people kind of blow it off and kind of go through it. So it's, it's a, it's a balance and I, I don't know what that level is.
Right, I mean, for something like around a school site, a lot of it's discretionary, so I agree that we'd want to talk about it at a community meeting, just so we've kind of like, you know, checked all of our boxes to make sure people are aware. Things like LED stoplights also, you want to bring up at a community meeting, because that's easy enough for me to buy and install. But if your, like, bedroom window is next to one and it's going off at ten o'clock at night, you may have something to say about it. And maybe it's a legit concern, or maybe it's not, but it's definitely something you want to air out first, before installing those kind of improvements.
Officer Kalipo had a lot of good insights on some of these issues. It may be worth discussing it with him before we go to the broader community and getting his take on it.
Well, we have a new traffic sergeant, uh, they cycle, um, they rotate through. So Officer Greg Marmio is our new traffic sergeant, so we can connect, connect with him. He's coming up to speed.
Jessica, what do you see are the key designs from an engineering standpoint that either were on the list or not list, it would calm the traffic or, or would?
I honestly think this was done by Alta Planning, I believe, who's really well respected and I really believe that this was done really well. I think if we had all the money just to spend, that we should just do all of it, frankly. Um, that's not what we have going on here, but I think they're all really good recommendations. I think a really big game changer for the Poppy neighborhood would to be alt, to alter that driveway or somehow alter that traffic flow to make it go in the way it's recommended. You know, it may be doing an alteration to the driveway or something else to alter that traffic flow. Um, I think that's a really critical piece of, from the recommendations.
So if you go in, if you're a parent and you're going on Poppy and you turn into that driveway, can you still make a right and go through the staff parking then?
Yeah, it's still a drop off.
And do parents?
Some parents do.
And then they have to get back in that line somehow, right?
Yeah, and it's a unique, so you can either take a left and go back through Phil's neighborhood. Um, or you can take a right and get back in the queue and go back over the crosswalk and, um, then get to Dave's. So it's a.
Huge, I don't see a huge, I'm not there all the time, I don't see a huge amount of cars coming out of there in the morning and heading.
It's a.
So are they dropping off and just saying, get over on the sidewalk and?
Yeah, and that's where sometimes it's tricky too, because kids, um, that, we encourage students to exit on the curb side. But if you're dropping off on this, in this model, when you're coming through, it's the driver's side who's now pulling up. So if you have a fourth or a fifth grader, here's the added, the Poppy side right here is the fourth and fifth grade wing. So, most, like, there, I think, older, the older kids sometimes get dropped off more over here. Not all the time, but there's a kind of a desire, oh, you're right there, just go to your classroom, the wing is right there, but they can sit in the front seat. And so they're now in the pa, and they're in the front driver's side and they're getting out into traffic, not on the curb side. Um, or, or kids who, so it's just a, it, uh, there's some unsafe situations that happen in the parking lot, um, because of the, the design.
It's better, it's better with the staff parking only there, because you're right, there's less movement. Um, there's been some better messaging. I think our fourth and fifth grade teachers have done a good job at messaging more safety, uh, this year than we've seen in the past. So, that's been helpful, but it's still not an ideal situation.
We're making the best.
Yeah.
This orange or yellow line bulb out that's drawn, that is not completed then.
No, that's the suggestion by the.
That's what I was gonna ask, that's one of the bigger ticket items in terms of switching, but as, if you, if you look at it, to me, it makes intuitive sense and more sense to do it. Do you think as someone who, you, you're obviously around the school a lot more, do you think that would make a, a big difference? It seems to me in the flow it does, because you, you'd go in, you'd drop off and then you'd go out, instead of like. Seems like some people are in that.
Yeah, I think it would alleviate a lot of near misses, honking, I mean, I think it's the best solution given. I think they've talked about wanting to, I know the school wanted to reverse.
There was some talk about that, yeah.
Traffic, some people were saying, well, if we reverse it, then kids get on the safe side and then, um, but it creates another unsafe situation of now cars are coming head on. So this seems to be the best.
How did they want to reverse it?
Just reverse the.
Going in the opposite.
Go in the exit.
Here and then you exit here, but you still have cars coming in.
So you'd come down Bruce, which isn't part of the plan, you'd hang a right on Poppy and then you'd go in, is that what you're?
Right in instead of pass the exit.
Guys better include Bruce on the plan.
So another, I think another thought, another, um, in the, the, the safety meeting that the, the teachers and principal and some of the parents had, was if we were to, um, so one thing that we also are missing is the sidewalk up here. I don't know if it's.
I'm sorry, I don't know what you're pointing.
Up on, on Dave's, sidewalk on Dave's. Um, and I can't remember if it's in this, but across from the church, there's no sidewalk here. Um, and what would it be like? Because the crosswalk here is still a unique. You know, if we do this, maybe the crosswalk can still stay, but we have double, the double crosswalk, if we move, somehow move a crosswalk up. Um, and provides some kind of.
So I did get some feedback from the district leadership on that. There's, um, some concerns with that. Um, by moving that crosswalk to the corner there at Poppy and Dave's Avenue. Um, kids would then cross there, they'd have to walk down and then still cross in front of a, an entrance driveway in, um, and then cross through. Um, they felt really comfortable, uh, with the orange, some version of this orange. Uh, we realize it's not set in stone, um, but they felt very comfortable with this because it encourages kids to take a sidewalk all the way down to a crosswalk. They'd cross all the way through and if you do that kind of, a version of that orange outline there, the kids don't have to, uh, cross, uh, any other kind of driveway. Um, either cars en, entering or exiting. So there was a lot of concern, uh, about, you know, that would actually help facilitate kind of student safety from that standpoint.
Can I ask why, um, so there's, there's two entrances, right, where they go to the staff parking lot or you go to the front one? Why, when you go to the front one, can you turn right and get into the staff parking? And what, and, because kids have to cross across that, right?
Yeah, that was.
Why is, I.
Don't know.
I don't know why.
Those plans were done, um, before my kids were part of this situation. Um, and, um, that was the recommendation of the architects at that time. That's what I've been told.
If you made that solid and you went in, you were going into one parking lot or the other, your kids are not crossing traffic then.
Yeah.
And you've got, you're forcing people to make a decision and to, to stick one and you're not kind of mixing the parking lots together then.
Yeah, um, we weren't a part, I, at least I wasn't a part of the, uh, process at that time when the school was renovated, so.
Jessica, I, I mentioned it before, was there any record, maybe you didn't get a chance to look, any records of what the city recommended to the school at that point?
I couldn't find anything of that nature, no.
Yeah, and I couldn't either.
Might be worth, might be worth the time, since I still think he's the city manager over in Campbell's, to go buy Brian Leventhal a cup of coffee. Because I know that there, there was friction between the school district and him at the time, as I was in the neighborhood. And they, you know, were, our architects are in Sacramento and blah, 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 there was some friction. I don't know what it was all about, but there might be, there might be some knowledge there that could be helpful. I, I don't know what the answer is, but he might, he might be able to offer different perspectives, historical, just an idea.
So it looks like they're actually saying, put cones across what I was just talking about during drop off and pickup.
Do they do that?
Well, they haven't done this yet, but I wonder if they're doing it now.
So when you pull, in the current configuration, when you pull into that entrance there along Poppy, um, there are, there are installed, what are called delineators or like little pillars, you can drive over them, the, they're supposed to encourage you not to. Um, so, uh, but that's to kind of help funnel traffic. Um, it also slows people down theoretically, turning into the parking lot. Um, though we still get reports of some speed coming in there. Um, staff will tell us that on a routine basis. Um, so again, I agree, anything we can do to kind of help slow traffic down a little bit in that area would be helpful.
Well, and this would make the driveway narrower if you do that bulb out like that, so people.
Yeah, it, it's also a visual, yeah, I agree with you, it's that visual kind of.
Jessica, there was a, a bullet, personally, I, doesn't matter to me, I believe, to, to lower the general traffic speed in the Poppy, Bruce level, is that?
That's something that was recommended.
Personally, I think, I'd like to see that and some other things to keep cars slower. But I, I think that's kind of a, if, if they're gonna enter down Poppy and whatever slower the tendency would be, they'd go into the school slower too.
Mm-hmm, and I know that's something that Palos Verdes neighbors have brought up before as well. Um, that's something I think that would require more of a formal traffic study to see if that's, you know, a reasonable option for that area.
It'd be worth checking into.
Well, I think I read somewhere earlier in the, in the school year that, um, Sunnyvale, some of the Sunnyvale schools, the school district had reduced, uh, speeds around their, their schools to fifteen miles an hour.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty common across the county, actually.
Yeah, and that, that would be different than our drive twenty-five and keep kids alive, but it is, uh. It's a, it's a, it's a reduced speed and it does, based on the study that they were referencing in, in the news article, it sounded like it was a, a wise decision.
Is that twenty-four seven or is it when children are present?
So we've got that right here, it said, suggested lower speed school zones fifteen to twenty miles per hour, streets when children are present. On Dave's, Poppy, Cabin and Vista.
And Bruce. I'm sorry to be a broken record, but that's real important.
Well, at least we're hearing you.
There's some criteria that you have to meet. I mean, you would know, but I, I think within five hundred feet of the school, you can lower it to twenty-five, sort of.
Five hundred to a thousand, it says, yeah.
But I, I think to get it down to fifteen is something.
Right, requires a formal study, basically. Which is something, you know, is a possibility that we could do.
How much does a study cost?
In the thousands, like less than ten thousand dollars.
And the other thing I threw out was, and I know there's pluses and minuses, we finally got clarification from the fire department, but as far as possible traffic humps, I don't know. I know there's, if it's right in front of my house, I might not be so happy about it, but I, I think, or, or putting kind of bulbous things in the slow traffic.
A bulb out?
Yeah, yeah, that, I mean, that's all engineering, but I think now that we understand what the fire requirement, fire department requirements are, I think, again, you could use some road design that would slow things down naturally. Not my area of expertise, but I think it should be looked at. I think the neighbors would be open for it, um, just in general, I can't speak for all of them, but it's just worth considering.
So Jessica, I have a question, because this came up with, um, from some of the district leadership. Um, in looking at, um, the recommendations of the traffic study, I know like this orange stuff.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, directing traffic like out of the Poppy side, would we need to do a traffic study or some further study to see any impacts on the neighborhood? Uh, the surrounding neighborhoods, like, you know, uh, Bruce, I know we've heard a lot from also, but I, I've also heard that from other parents that lived down that street. So that is a concern, um, if we're directing traffic out of our school sites, um, and it's having a negative impact, a significant negative impact on the, the neighbor, the surrounding neighborhood.
Right.
That's an important consideration. How do we, how do we manage that concern, or is that part of that next community?
I think that's a part, right, part of the next community meeting, but I think before you had, when you had something formally designed, like when you actually have someone go out and do topography and to actually engineer it, you would do some kind of study or review of data that you've already collected.
Okay.
To evaluate that.
Okay.
I think the, the big thing is just from, people gun cars down Bruce and Poppy when people are clear and they, they, they just gun cars. And we have a lot of expensive cars in our area and I, and I say it again and again, but fifteen, twenty years ago, when everybody at Dave's was driving Hummer twos, there were Hummer twos all over the place and they'd go through stages. You know, real powerful cars, they, these big cars would just barrel down the street with kids in the road. And, um, hopefully cars are getting smaller, you've got a three hundred thousand dollar, you know, Lamborghini that's dropping off a kid at Dave's Avenue, it's kind of hard to run it at fifteen miles per hour, but there's two that cross, that go in front of my house most mornings. So it's a challenge.
Do we have any information from the school, since they're not here, on which of these recommendations they felt would make an impact or have the biggest impact?
Well, from my discussions, because I work with the superintendent, my, my discussion with the superintendent and after he had some discussion with the Board of Education, that, um, they were, would be open to discussions about, uh, kind of a project along the Poppy side, um, to help kind of facilitate that. Um, again, funds are always the issue, so, um, at this current stage, the school district doesn't have the funds to do that work. Um, and that's a large capital improvement that would re, would require a significant amount of money. But, uh, in the meantime, also just continuing to work with, uh, the, the school community and messaging, education and outreach, along with updated signage. So we're working on some of that.
I think at some point, I can't remember when we, about, um, some of the grants, potential grants that might be coming up, that we could be, if, if we, um, start to do some work and get agreement and, you know, have a, a, a well-rounded partnership with the district. That there might be, that it might be a good opportunity for us to get something, get a project together.
Right, it's always good to have something kind of underway or a project in formulation when you go apply for grants, so they see you've already done a lot of the, you know, backup work, even perhaps have a draft design, which we kind of have for one of these projects already. Um, before you apply for grants, you're much more likely to be awarded grants when you have a project and a partnership already going on.
So part of the one on Poppy Lane, when I read, um, the attachment we had, was Poppy Lane right turn improvements, create a time of day dedicated right turn lane on northbound Poppy. So is that along kind of that school staff parking lot?
Right, so right now there's parking there, I, I think twenty-four hours a day, and it would be, get rid of that parking, so that would be the queue into that parking lot.
It would flow things through there. So those cars, you know, that didn't want to turn would be in the regular lane, everybody else would be in the, the right lane to get in there and be moving. So that in conjunction, if we're looking at the Poppy Lane side, that in conjunction with these, the.
And that's something that, right, is just striping and signage that's something that you could do before you did any kind of, you know, capital improvement, you know, and that might alleviate.
And what does it take to get the, you know, talk to the residents and get them to agree to something, to put something like that through, is it a big deal?
Well, that would be something that you put up at the community meeting, it would be something that we'd have to also collaborate with the police department on, because if you put no parking, then they have to have some way to enforce it and probably has to be in our city code somewhere. So it is a process, but as far as, um, it's not a monetary, yeah, yeah, it's not too, not too expensive of a project, just more of a process issue.
Where would the no parking be?
Um, you know where the staff parking now is? Right along that same side, but on Poppy.
Is that red?
No.
Part of it's red.
Father, father down, okay. Do you just have to strike red down there?
Or just no parking, like, you know, whatever time of day, school time.
Yeah, I think given, uh, since you have a residential community across the street, that, um, just a time of day during school, seven thirty to three o'clock or something like that.
I saw someone park a boat out there the other day, it wasn't mine, but yeah, they use that, not, not my thing.
That would be an interesting first step. I had, I don't know why I hadn't. But to, to actually alleviate, because if there's more flow, people are gonna be more, potentially more encouraged to take a right to go back to Dave's versus.
Make that left and.
Taking a left to get back to Bruce.
To make a left to go out, which.
And because, yeah, the only way you then, if you're going down Bruce, the only way you really can go is to take a right then onto Winchester, because trying to take a left onto Winchester at that time of the day is.
It's.
Swimming upstream, not, not a good idea. Um, but that would be a, create, um.
A little bit of flow there.
A lot, yeah.
It could open up.
Yeah, it would open things up.
And so that's estimated at ten thousand, whereas the driveway configuration is a half million.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the biggest ticket item and it's like.
Could lead into the other, but there.
It's certainly be a good thing to try first, you know.
Yeah, Jessica, could that be done as a pilot?
Yeah, I, I, like I said, we'd want to air that out in a community meeting first.
Totally get that, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but something that we could do on a trial basis, I think so, yes.
I would highly recommend that you talk to, this is just my suggestion, do you have an informal conversation with Mark and Heather Harrington? I believe Heather is on the Architecture Committee, and I'm sure she would give you great input on that, that would be valuable, because she's also a professional kind of in that area. She's a designer, but I'm sure they, their, their house faces that, so they could give you some really good input.
Pick a couple of their kids parked there when I've been out there in the morning.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, they, they would, they would be able to give you some good input.
Sure.
They'd have it overnight, though, I mean, if it's just during the school day and weekend, I mean, you know, you'd have the weekends and.
So it sounds like if, just kind of doing a big recap, I guess. The Poppy Lane, so really trying to hone in on, um, a few key steps for Poppy, which might be a pilot of the, um, lane striping. Again, all of this is with community input, so the next step is community input on the, on the topics that I'm about to just recap, and if I'm misspeaking, please.
I wouldn't say anything.
So potentially the restriping one, um, developing some kind of project for the capital improvement around actually doing some concrete work onsite in partnership with the district. And the, the, it sounded, we had a conversation about the stop signs, um, LED stop signs and, uh, a stop sign at Cavan. If that would be, again, things to, things to check in with our community members about, uh, what the impact may be on them.
So what are red LED flashing stop signs, are they just the regular stop signs, but they have the lights around them, so they're?
Yeah, and they're like solar powered.
They're really, really bright, like really bright.
And I have, did we have anything in here about embedded, um, crosswalk lights or anything, or was that brought up?
I don't know.
I, I've mentioned it a couple of times, but I think it's more expensive.
It's, it's expensive and it, it proves to be problematic, they did that on, uh, Highway nine in the last couple of years, and then they had, I think it's gone now, right?
It is gone, but you know what, Saratoga actually took theirs out that was put in at the same time and they replaced them with the other ones down at Oak Street, and those have been very effective, yeah. So I don't know if there's.
Anytime there's resurfacing, there's a problem, and I think these things are problematic, is what we've learned over the years. We had some put in.
Yeah, so they've, they've been doing some other signage, if you're on Los Gatos Almudin Road, um, they put in a, a crosswalk there, um, by Cherry Blossom. And, um, there, it's not a lighted crosswalk, but there's lights, there's signage that lights up, kind of LED signage that lights up, so, yeah. So you see more of that, like countywide.
That's what Masol has now, she pushes the button and it lights up.
This one, yeah, it's very similar, yeah.
Is there a way to program those LED lights so that, say, say if they were, since it, you know, around Dave's is, you know, it's a very residential area? So a way to have them programmed such that maybe they don't go off when it's dark at night, so if it's, you know, somebody's sleeping, you know, do, do you know if that?
Yeah, those do exist, yeah.
Okay.
Not to open the conversation back up, but I realized one thing that we didn't talk about that is, um, we talked about the surrounding, but another part of the Dave's community and our community lives on that side of Highway nine. Um, and one of the recommendations was, the, yeah, the Masol crossing. And I, I haven't done a whole lot of fact finding. About, but I do know that in the heat map, that's the safe routes to school provided that half of, more than half of the students that they surveyed at the time lived on that side of Highway nine.
That's a lot.
Which is a significant amount of students, so I think just, um, I don't want to overlook that we have a large community and parents who, I do have friends who live over there, who would love to have a safe passage for their kids. And figuring out this to help them feel safer over here is good.
Still gotta get them across.
You gotta get them across the highway. So at some point, um.
And that's gonna be really interesting with that development that's going in there. I don't know if you, you know, the, the liquor store and the real estate, that whole thing's gonna be. And how people get into it, so right now you can only make a right turn into any of those properties, right, you have to be coming from Saratoga way. And so, you know, they were talking about putting in a U-turn at Masol, they were talking about putting a light in there, so I don't know what has been decided, if anything will, but that's gonna be a lot of traffic. And a lot going on there too, so it's gonna make it, probably.
I don't remember how much we share with Los Gatos.
Share what?
The, the space around that, that intersection and that.
Well, it's actually Caltrans, but that's all Los Gatos up to the houses, I believe, Surt money, Serena, yeah, so that's all.
I do believe that the town council ha- has that continually, tries to address that, it comes up repeatedly, uh, in their traffic studies, review, their traffic review. So, um, I don't know what the current progress is.
For us to stay informed, either as a commission or the safe routes, the parents, who, you know, have friends and whose families want to.
There are some families that try, I mean, I see them try to get across there and parents go.
Are there many kids, I, maybe I missed in the report and I didn't look, are there many kids that actually, I can't imagine any parents letting kids walk across nine by themselves, but are there people that do that?
I don't see them go, I see kids go across by themselves, but older, but they don't.
Do they? Nine?
There's two girls that, that ride almost every, I have one that rides almost every day.
And she crosses by herself, her parents meet her? Wow.
And I'm sure that that's where she crosses, she may cross somewhere else, but I have two that I know that that's the way that they go home.
Boy, I'd be, friends worry about Poppy, I can't imagine them worrying about nine.
And I don't, and I don't know if they cross it at, at, um, Santa Cruz and Highway nine, or if they take, but I'm pretty, I'm fairly certain that that's where they cross as well.
Yeah, it's a tough one, it's not safe, even for adults, it's not safe, yeah.
That's, and not to open up a whole other can, but that was, uh, that's one of the, the last one, actually.
Figure a solution for that, right?
So, uh, more fact finding, if you have a chance to cruise through the neighborhood, walk, try to walk it yourself.
So, um, just from a bike and ped, uh, safety standpoint, um, one of the things that I noticed, uh, as I've been thinking about this tonight is, uh, the installation of bike lanes along any of this to encourage not just the kids to ride, but the community to ride? Is that part of something that can be explored in the process of?
Yeah, definitely, I know one of the recommendations that honestly was harder for me to follow was the, it, it sounded like they wanted to expand the sidewalk to allow for people to ride bikes on the sidewalk down Poppy, I'm not.
I'm not sure about that, there are areas where you, they do that.
Something like that, but beyond that, I don't think there were any other, like, bike, capital bike recommendations, is that correct?
Yeah, there, yeah, I don't think so.
But yeah, that's definitely something we can explore through this process.
If you added that extra lane on Poppy, it would probably take away the ability to ride a bicycle on, that might be why they suggested that.
They talk about widen the sidewalk on Poppy Lane between the campus facility driveway, so that's that one closest to Vista, and the Egress Campus driveway.
The campus, so that's between Vista and the school?
Well, no, it isn't, because the Egress Campus driveway to provide students with a dedicated two-way multi-use facility feed to feed directly onto the campus.
Curious where that is.
Extending the two-way multi-use facility to Vista would be preferred, but it requires the city to secure a right-of-way.
I don't know how you'd expand that sidewalk across from me, I mean, it's, because there's.
It's got that fence right there.
Oh, yeah, they were worried about that when they put the sidewalk in, they were concerned about the fellow that owns it, just modded, I can't, you'd be going right into his yard, I think, unless you went into Poppy.
You bumped it out in the street, the street's not very wide there.
I don't know how you do that.
So, um, in looking at his recommendations here, I was just trying to remember what this, this was. So, um, along Blossom Hill Road, this coming summer, they're going to put in an enhanced sidewalk there along, coming up the hill, so just be, I guess it's going. It's going east, oh, thank you, I still turned around here, um, going east.
To Fisher.
To, to Fisher, yeah, and that's considered a multimodal, um, pathway, so students will be able to, there'll be enough space for students to be allowed to ri- ride and to walk. Cause we're trying to pull the kids out of that, off of that street for safety reasons, obviously. So that might be a good thing to kind of look at in terms of what that might look like going forward, I just don't know, uh, you know, in terms of the space along Poppy, whether or not you're right, there's space for that, but there'll be some examples within the surrounding communities that, um, might be helpful to take a look at.
Reality is a kid uses, I don't know if it's technically right, but they ride their bikes on that sidewalk, I see it all the time, I, it's like people just deal with it.
Yeah, and, and I think with students, we, we hear from parents that they encourage their kids to ride on, the, the police aren't going to, uh, pull a kid over and give them a ticket for that. If they're being reckless, they'll provide some education, but.
It seems to be okay.
Yeah, I think people are pretty supportive that way.
That's a, that's a good point to kind of observe how things go on Blossom Hill, because there are some lessons that we can learn.
Yeah.
When we first moved twenty-one years ago, there was a unicycle family, literally, that would come down Poppy, and it was like five people would come down, four people would come down in unicycles from Poppy in the morning dodging traffic, so, I've seen it all. It seems like it still works.
I apologize, but I have to excuse myself, I've got a call to India, I've gotta get ready for it. Nice to see you, nice to see you, good to meet you guys.
Nice to meet you, thank you.
Thanks for taking the time to come.
So where, where do we go from?
One thing you're, when you summarized, um, the school zones or like the possibility of fifteen miles an hour.
Yeah.
We, we, should we try to look into if that's a possibility, what the legal requirements are?
I think that would be a really good point.
I'm, I, I think so. I mean, if another, yeah, I mean, if another school district has done it, so it's been done somewhere else for some reason, and we have a, an issue with speeding, so it wouldn't hurt to look into.
I think you would get support, is, one of the thing I hear is people going fast, whether the police department agrees or not, they, the perceptions are going fast, so I think that would be a good thing to look at.
And if we can't do it, it'd be good to know that we can't do it.
Yeah.
I drive down Dave's every day, like six days a week, are there even like school zone signs on Dave's Avenue? Like coming from Winchester?
I don't know.
That's a good sign, that's a good question.
Now, are there, when they, like, I can't, because back years ago, like the first twenty-five mile an hour sign used to be a school zone, but then they took that off. They took that off because then they just changed Dave's Avenue to a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, so I don't know, I'm trying, as you guys keep talking, I'm trying to, like, I'm sitting here and I keep thinking. Is there even, does it even tell somebody when they come onto Dave's Avenue that they're going to be entering a school zone?
Yeah, I don't know.
That's a great question.
I just know that there's the twenty-five mile one that's like cut into the bush.
It is, that you can't even see.
Yeah.
But it's not obvious.
It's really amazing, it's like it was groomed. But that, that's also the same for, I mean, would it be beneficial to have it on Winchester, so that people who are turning right even know what they're about to get into?
That's a, it's a fair question.
I mean, there's so many, there are also, there's so many contractors and so many trucks that come through during.
And once you're there, you're stuck.
And they are, and thankfully the turn lane has alleviated that, because you used to get honked at and harassed by the poor people behind you.
Your contractors is a real issue in the morning, they're going to do their job, they're trying to, you know, earn a living.
No, that's a great, that's a good question.
No, I think it's a good one, looking at the signage and both.
I'm like, literally, I'm like, I'm trying to pin my, I drive up Dave's six days a week, I'm like, I don't know if I remember seeing one.
And I'm gonna ask another question about signage, so the little.
You got me curious.
Things that are the dividers that bounce up and down, that are in the driveway right now.
Those little delineator things?
The delineators, thank you, and then, um, they have some. I saw the, the kids went on a field trip the other day and the bus came into the parking lot and totally took them out, and I was.
That happens every year.
Back up.
Every year.
But in downtown, they have the pedestrian crossing signs that kind of, you know, you feel like you're, you have to be cautious a little bit more when you're going through, because it has, in the middle of the road, it has the delineator.
And they have the bump outs and they have a little planter, so it's actually calmed.
Well, they have a sign in Vista, but it's half ripped apart.
In the middle of the street, cause I'm wondering, is the middle of the street one, is that, you know, I don't know.
Yes, it's in the middle of the street, right in the middle of Vista and Poppy, my house faces it, trust me. It's a mess, though, part of it's gone, it's been run over.
Well, if we're exploring signage, is that something, instead of the built-in LED lights, is there a, you know, a solution for that stop sign, especially given the crossing guard? Attendance issues that the school is seeing, is there an option for having the little, uh?
Delineators?
The delineators? Cause, I mean, it's a short-term, shorter-term solution, but.
So Megan, one thing we can do with safe routes to school is we can do a walk audit around those areas and it, it can point out those kinds of things.
Can we as a committee do that with, with you?
I don't, there's not a, I, I don't see why not.
Is it if we all do it?
If you all roll in the same spot at the same time, yeah.
I could, I could share coffee at the end of my driveway.
We could go out in groups of twos.
Because the other thing is, you know, that we might want to consider, you know, it looked at poor pavement condition, lack of curb gutter and sidewalk and effects of those, I mean, it might be nice to incorporate that and say, what is it? And take some photos of really what's going on.
It's a great, it's a great question, I don't, I should know, I don't know.
That would be especially good to do before the community meeting. That we. But if we, so, if we set that up, um, invite commissioners, if we just can't have a quorum.
Or, or you can notice it as a special meeting.
Okay.
Or even if we knew the path that was being taken, so we could do it on our own, you know, yeah, so we all knew what we're talking about.
The Brown Act violation if a quorum walks around the neighborhood?
Yes. But what we could do, can we talk about having an action plan where, you know, like I'll take, I'm gonna walk around this part and I'll take pictures and report back to everybody? If you go down and you walk Vista and take pictures, you go to Palos Verdes.
Have assignments.
And have assignments, is that, can we do that, can we take action that way?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm still very innovative.
And could we have one or two volunteers to go with the safe routes team, I think that'd be a good idea.
Pull some of our safe routes team together.
Yeah, and pair up, buddy up.
Three people. And we'd have a lot of information, it seems.
That, that would actually be good to buddy up with them.
We can facilitate that.
So around the school, it's a new.
Um, learning, learning journey is another way we could call it, it's a learning journey.
I, I could, I could get, if there's any interest, I probably could snag a couple interested neighborhood people that would, I could think of a couple that would probably do it, depending on the time. I, it just, if you, for what it's worth.
I almost think it'd be good to have it from an internal kind of perspective and then do the community meeting and see where they kind of match together.
We're still information gathering.
Could do the same with them too, so what, I mean, the, you know, do school to get a perspective there.
And then do a community walk.
And then, cause then you have a solid lens of, I'm now gonna walk as a community, and we represent the community, so we definitely have, I mean, they're your primary constituents.
I just like to hear from someone other myself, so you don't think I'm nuts and crazy.
Well, we, I know, I have five friends that live on Bruce, I know five families that live on Bruce who, who walk their kids in, so.
Well, it seems to me we, we either have two weeks to get it done before school's out or like right at the beginning, I don't know when the community meeting was gonna be, but we can't do anything over the summer, cause there's no school traffic.
Yeah.
But it's more of a structural walk, though, isn't it, than a traffic, I, I mean, it would be good to see both, but yeah.
I think it'd be helpful to, to see it.
You can do them as both.
Yeah.
Uh, but you're right, with the school year rapidly coming to a close, um, maybe, um, doing that school traffic walk, um, at, right after school gets starts, um, would be helpful.
Drop, drop off is really pretty crazy too, but yeah.
But the structural, um, you're right, the road conditions, you could do, um, kind of at any time, you could do that in the summer if you wanted to.
The potholes on Bruce are there no matter the time of day.
Yeah, it, it, it's a nice way to identify, um, it also allows you to get additional feedback, uh, for these walk and roll maps. We haven't actually had a conversation as to when they should be updated, but I think right now I wouldn't, I would recommend that you hold off on updating that until you kind of get through your community meeting and you get some input. Again, these are suggested routes, um, that we suggest, uh, that families can take a look at, um, to get to and from school safely on foot or bike. So, uh, that's kind of really, they're not intended to necessarily be driving routes, those are separate. But from a, a safe routes to school perspective, um, it would be nice to, these are get, these have been in, in existence a few years now, and maybe a fresh set of eyes on them. Um, and this would be a good opportunity, uh, doing the structural walk would be a really good time to kind of get some feedback on that.
Does that information get shared with new parents, like?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. It's also on our Safe Routes to School website. It's linked, often I link them in our Wednesday flyers, our Wednesday newsletters that go out. There's hard copies. We usually have out at back to school night. And messaging goes out to incoming kindergarten families. That's part of our, what we call our Right From the Start program. That actually starts in the spring. So information goes out to them about, you know, consider walking a practice over the summer. Download a map, go for a little practice walk. I have some calendars here I was going to share with you about, it's our Safe Routes to School calendar for next year. I realize the formatting's a little off. It's been a long day. But it includes our meetings, when our outreach is. Dave's, I removed, to consolidate onto one thing, I put it, took out the bike rodeos. It just has the Dave's Avenue Bike Rodeo, so we could always use volunteers. If you've never worked a bike rodeo, it's a lot of fun. You don't have to wear a cowboy hat, though Megan did.
Rodeo.
It was a rodeo. It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. So I'll leave these for you, so hopefully you can get engaged with the walking and biking community at the local school here.
The other thing with the walk around, you could hold off on the neighbors, but I do think there's a critical member that should be invited to walk around, and that's the representative or representatives from the school, of the church. Sorry, they're just, they're more than just a neighbor. They represent a large community over there. And I would like to see them included in the process if that's possible.
Well, I think they would be considered part of the school community as our education.
And the other one to a lesser degree to keep in mind, and it's less of an issue with the churches, there is a retirement community at the end of Poppy. That's the Presbyterian Church or it's another, it's at the end of Poppy. So there's an older community at the end of Poppy, to the opposite end of Poppy near me. That, this and aside, I think the church, though, is much more critical because they're in the thick of it. They have their own childcare requirements and Sunday weekend requirement flows and.
So.
Can I summarize this?
I think we've made some good headway, lots of good collaboration, lots of good thought partnership and some, I think some solid next steps, which include the community.
Jessica, how does, excuse me, how does the prioritization of the road redo? I'm not saying to do one before the other, but how does that fit into this whole process? Because I, you know, when I was ranking and raving, oh, Bruce, you threw that out of the table as something we might consider. How do we fold that into the process in an orderly manner? I'm not saying the order, but one of your concerns honestly was maybe we don't want to do Bruce yet because we want to fit it into the plan. How do we, how do we do that? And there's Vista, I guess, maybe. How do you fold that into the whole process to make it work? I guess is my question.
So as far as the quality of Bruce and Vista's pavement, I think a lot of.
Relative to the capital improvements that we're talking about.
Right. So considering the school site and encouraging bike and pedestrian movements, I think the poor quality of those streets deter people off, definitely from biking because it's the roadway, the ends and various areas, depending on the frontage or what people have done improvements. So doing improvements to those frontages and the roadways really promote safe biking and walking to school in those areas. So I think those are roads that the city would evaluate as part of this, any kind of road project we would do anywhere near the school.
And the other thing which Rowena, the mayor, reminded me of several times is Dave's Avenue School also serves another purpose. It's, I'm using the wrong terminology, but it's the place for evacuation if there's a fire in Monte Sirena, which has safety issues, which you could consider in the process. And she pointed out to me, and I never thought about it, you obviously want to have it set up for if someone's, you know, an area is burning in the city, you want to be able to look at the school in an efficient, safe manner. And it's not an angle I thought of, but I thought it was a good point.
No, that's a very good point. Thank you for bringing that up.
So if Bruce gets, you know, pothole repairs and pavement things, at what point would looking at a bike lane or pedestrian, pedestrian bike lane? So just even some lines along there, could that be looked at at the same time?
Yeah, definitely. And I mean, there's a partial sidewalk on Bruce also that ends in those ghettos. And I guess it just kind of, for those areas depends on the community desire to have that. There's a lot of other neighborhoods in the city that very expressly do not want sidewalks. And so that's just something we won't consider because we'd rather spend our bike and pedestrian funds in neighborhoods that desire those kind of improvements. So I think before we did anything other than just kind of standard curb and gutter on streets that would really need to be evaluated at like a community meeting.
I could be wrong, but I think they'll be receptive. You'll find, look at it objectively, but I think you find the people on Bruce to be receptive of it. But find out objectively.
Because often, you know, bike lanes only really work where people respect them, you know what I mean? So if we go through the community and they're like, yes, great, we want these, they're less likely to park in them, you know. You know what I mean? So.
Our plan of attack, the game plan moving forward. We'll need to schedule a community meeting for some time in the future.
Depending on if you want to move forward with doing those walk audits when school comes back in session, that would push it out till later in the fall, so.
When we have the community meeting, are we, do we plan to have specific proposals that we think could be funded to talk about? Or what, is that what we're going to do at the community meeting?
I think the, I think the purpose of the community meeting would be to say, we've heard this from the school. We know that there's, we know that there is an effort around safe routes. And we also know that the city is doing, I think expressing the two things in the pavement management and as an opportunity to have a conversation with them about what are their needs and what opportunities exist for us to support them in conjunction with supporting the school. I don't know if it would be sharing, I mean, maybe it could be sharing proposals.
Well, if we, if, like, if we're talking about the no parking on Poppy, that would be a time to present that and say, you know, one of the things that's kind of an easy win, but we want to hear from you.
I think it'd be good to get their feedback on things that we might be considering as opposed to, you know.
And I would do it. We did one at Dave's Avenue School when we did the planning thing for Hacienda and stuff as far as planning goes, and that was, that was a more controversial issue. But we did it at Dave's Avenue School and it was, it seemed like it worked well, especially if that's where it's at. I would, I would work with the school district to probably have it there. I would make sure that the mailers went out, told the neighborhood like you do on, you know, zoning and make sure it's on the website. And I'll go around and knock on doors personally to them, hey, you better show up. But yeah, we could do a good job.
And as we get closer, we can talk about what we think, because there's obviously like a 500-foot area or whatever around the school where you notice people for different types of projects. But we could talk about what other neighborhoods should be included, kind of look at the heat maps and see what other areas of the city where people live and who would be using this facility and invite them as well.
As far as timing, does it need to wait until school's back in session? The community meeting?
Yeah.
I don't know how much you're going to do in the summer.
I don't think you're going to get a lot of traction in the summer. I just, I think people are going to be pretty much out or on vacation or doing, I think you'd have more traction for a meeting like that if it was announced like right when you got back to school, people are back in town and then did it shortly thereafter.
How does that impact kind of the funding cycles we were talking about for projects?
Good question.
Yeah, so different grants, sometimes you don't get a lot of warning when they're going to advertise for projects. Right now, I'm thinking the ATP, I think, is going to probably advertise towards the late fall of this year. And that's the one that I was specifically thinking of for these projects, but it just kind of depends.
And once they advertise, do you have three months or how long do you have?
You usually have at least a month, you know, sometimes.
Do you have to have just an initial proposal or you have to have your engineering and?
It depends. Yeah, you're more competitive, obviously, if you have like a totally designed project, you know, but.
Double-ready plan.
Exactly. But it just, it depends on the funding source. Sorry, that's kind of a vague answer, but it just kind of depends on where the money's coming from. Yeah.
That's a tough. So what would you say the best way to proceed if we do want to, what would you recommend?
Well, it sounded like you guys wanted to do some information gathering, so right, the structural you can really do at any point. And the summer's probably more pleasant to do that anyway. I guess the question is, is there, I know there's been data collected in the past kind of on walking patterns. And I'm not sure how recent the data you guys have is, but if there's a desire to get some kind of updated.
We can work on that. I mean, we're heading towards the end of the school year, so that's a little tough. We can do some, heat maps probably haven't changed significantly, though enrollment is a little down. But I can work with the school district to see what we can do for that. We do do data collection every fall and I can share that data. I know, Megan, I think you, I don't know if I shared some of it with you, this year's, the 2018. So we track data in the fall. And so those are already scheduled for next year. But we have out of this school site, out of any school site, this school site in Blossom Hill, probably in Fisher, we have close to 10 years' worth of data off and on. And it ebbs and flows as any school site.
And we also have to keep in mind that data is a function of the way the design is done now, so.
Well, it gives.
If Bruce is scary with potholes and the parents don't want their kids to walk down, you can't say, oh, there's no one walking down Bruce. We don't want to put any effort there.
Well, and it does.
If there's a causal relationship there.
It does kind of paint a picture of where you're at right now.
Right.
And then with outreach, Megan, you did Bike to School Day. You said you had 125 bikes or, or bikes.
We had 150.
Yeah, so with some, with some outreach, you can really shift your, your patterns significantly. Those don't seem like huge, but out of a school of a little over 500, that's a good chunk. And just some moderate outreach.
The one, the one I bring up is your current walk to school data has people walking down the side of Winchester and then they hang a left on Dave's.
So again, those are.
If you're coming, if you're coming from the south, your desire is going to be to hang a left on Bruce. You're not going to walk another two blocks down to hang a left on Dave's.
So we don't actually track the route the kid takes. So I can't tell you that that's, I can't tell you that there's 15 kids or 100 kids that are actually walking. That, that is data that is very difficult to track. We track mode, travel mode, how they, and for us, it's how they get to school. The going home portion is really difficult for our youngest students. And I think Nicole could say this, that the younger the kids are, if you say, how are you getting home? They'll say grandma's taking me home. And really what I want to know is, are you going in a car? Or are you going on a bike? So by asking the kids how they get to school, that kind of helps standardize that. And we found that that's been the easiest way for us to track how kids travel. Typically, if they ride a bike to school, 90% of the time they ride at home. So, you know, and again, we've also had a lot of change at Dave's Avenue in terms of principles and leadership there, so we're hoping that we can kind of see that shift. Some stability there provides.
Does daycare fit into the data collection at all?
We have never, and I don't know of a Safe Routes to School program, because I do meet with other programs in the county that collect data out of a preschool or a daycare, but we can do that.
I just remember, because you've got, I've got two daycare centers around Dave's, right?
Yeah, we could, we could definitely include them.
I should call it after-school care. I'm sorry, not daycare.
But we could, that could be included. We do collect data from Hillbrook, a private school.
The thing with the church and then the onsite is one that they're, for the onsite that's sponsored through the Park and Recs program, the parents get there before school starts. The purpose, they start at like 7:15?
Yeah.
I think, I think it opens up at 7:00 or 7:15, yeah.
Yeah, it's really, it's early so that parents can drop their kids off early. So they typically are not coming at the eight, the 7:50 crunch.
Right, now the problem we're trying to alleviate.
Yeah. And then the kids at the rec program just walk directly on. And rarely are they, and then they stay later, so they're after school typically are being picked up.
So maybe the data to collect from there is to work with your group, and this would be a good pilot, because we already have an established relationship with you now, is to get some adult or parent feedback. And that can be kind of really beneficial. And that might provide us with another data point that, again, that could be quite useful, who knows, maybe, in grant information? Who, I don't know. I've been asked for all sorts of data over the years, so. But maybe kind of getting some feedback, also maybe some education points. You know, what kind of, what kind of things do parents that drive at 7 o'clock in the morning see? There's high school students on the road, you know, like what do they see? What are some of the things that might facilitate them getting to and from where they need to go?
I mean, I don't, I don't know the volume, but I do see parents will park their car and they will walk to the, to the rec daycare in front of my house. And they'll take the kid and they'll walk either to the house, maybe cut over to Rose Avenue or something. So there is, it's nowhere near the volume, but there is some walking traffic that, I don't know. It's, it'd be useful if you could facilitate that more, it would be great. That's what I mentioned.
You and I can work on some questions, maybe, a few questions, and then maybe Nicole can kind of help us facilitate that with your families.
Does it make sense for us to try to tackle the conditions, like you said, the conditions of the certain neighborhoods over the summer? And maybe you assign us either in twos or in two, with conjunction with them and just say, okay, you two or you three, go do this area. And then we can connect and like, oh, I'm in town now and, oh, but you're not, but let's do it in two weeks. If we can, if we can knock that out over the summer, whenever it's convenient for whatever you assign, maybe we could at least just get that done.
The other thing, a slightly different thing is, you know, I did pedestrian and bicycle counts on Highway 9. We can do them. You know, we can do them ourselves if you want to. And, you know, when somebody sits at Dave's and somebody sits on Poppy and you count, you know. So you can do counts if you need to.
Well, a reason that it's difficult for us to get the counts is because of the parent volunteers. It's hard to get parents, I mean.
Well, we've done it, but it's, you're right.
It's tricky. I mean, if, yeah.
No, but I mean, as community members.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I don't think I've thought about leveraging.
I don't have kids I have to take to school. I can actually be there.
Well, and then Megan, we do have a few Safe Routes to School volunteers that might be able to, Maria for one, who can rally some people, Risto.
I can provide, I joke, but it's true, I can provide coffee and donuts at the end of my driveway. You can sit there with a clicker and watch people walk by on Poppy for a couple of days. I mean.
It's a very, you know, specific time period, so it's not like it'd be there all day. If we really need them and think it's beneficial, then.
The other thing with the, and I don't know, but the other thing with, with the walkarounds, it might be useful to have a little bit of a guide, not a super procedure, but maybe Jessica could, hey, these are the things you could look for. So, you know, one, we kind of look at the key things in a, in a uniform manner. It doesn't have to be a scientific thing.
Should we be looking for?
Consistent.
Consistent, yeah.
And Safe Routes, we have some of that info and you and I can sit down and tailor it for the, this group. Use that as a guide, come up with a few.
Why reproduce a wheel? And that's a good point.
We'll just modify what's existing.
Great. Good meeting.
So the goal is to do the data collection over the summer on the structural walks, the structural audits, figure out ways to collect data from the before and after-school childcare programs and then figure out timing for collecting more data on school counts coming out of the school.
Yeah, because if you're doing school, I don't think there's any way to get it done before the end of the school year.
Yeah, unless you guys want to show up next Thursday or Wednesday, I would be truly happy to. But how long do we have to, because then if there's two of us, three of us, the quorum thing. But if we, you know, I'm happy to say like next Wednesday or Thursday, because it's the week before school, the weather's kind of better. Is that a bad time to do car counts?
Car, no. We did them.
I feel like we did them last year.
We did car counts last year at this time. I just don't remember. Yeah, we did car counts at this time.
There's also some daily patterns, aren't there? Like Fridays and Mondays might be different. It seems like that, maybe it's.
Well, it's early dismissal every Wednesday. Your outside of open house happened, right? Okay, thank you. So I would just stay away from the last week of school.
I could do next one, just your Thursday.
Next week is the only week?
Yeah, let's, Megan, you and I can connect on that because I have all the info to do car counts. And then we can, I think we did, we can talk about that.
Why don't you let me know if you want to do that?
Yeah, I'll. But do you morning or afternoon or both?
We typically do morning.
Morning.
Because the afternoon kids go in different directions.
Send me an email. I can walk the long distance.
And then if we're doing something like that, is it still two people? Or if you're different driveways and stuff and you don't talk to each other, is it?
Nah, no, I understand what you're saying. You know, if you just. You know, if you just send all the data to me and not to, um...
To each other?
Yeah, to each other, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you send it to her and me, then we can manipulate it and share it out.
Out, back out.
So...
So, we may show up at the same location, but we might not talk to each other and then we just share the data with you.
They have different driveways.
Okay, so which day are you considering that? No, because I'll put a, I'll put a call out to our Safe Routes to School volunteers, which might ease your, your conversation issues. We have the same problem with our, our Safe Routes to School Board, so, uh...
Is there a difference in timing or traffic because of any way the school day goes on? Or are they going to be indicative of the same patterns on Wednesday or Thursday? You know what I'm saying?
So, we would want to avoid Wednesday.
I would say avoid Wednesday.
Wednesday, because that's a short day, so people have a very different pattern of travel for kids.
But Thursday's going to be more indicative of what like...
I would say.
Yeah, Tuesday or Thursday would be...
Tuesday or Thursday.
Better days. And it's roughly, we've been starting seven, I mean, it's like a half hour, 7:45 to 8:20, 35 minutes.
And I have all, I'll have, I have all the materials. I have clickers, I have clipboards, I have vests, I have pens.
And he's got copies, so there you go.
Yeah, he's got, that I don't have, so.
Just tell me where to show up.
It's expensive.
And I think a, a car count. So, I'll email Jessica.
Yeah.
Email everybody?
Yeah.
About, or, okay. But we'll do, do we agree on Thursday?
The other thing is the community meeting, right?
Yes, yeah. So, the community meeting, is that something that we should do further? Because we have a meeting in June.
Yes.
We have a regularly scheduled meeting in June, at which point we can actually come back and discuss the data that we've collected. When would be, would we do, want to do a community meeting? Probably July most, the five families that I know who live on Bruce will most likely be out of town.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, not that that matters, but...
Vote for Paul?
I think, I think you need...
I, I just think to be courteous to, to the community, I think, assuming that people are going to be gone during the summer is a safe assumption. I, I just think that, you know...
Got to take time to do it right.
Yeah, exactly. You know, you want to give people enough heads up and enough opportunity to, if they feel strongly about what we're talking about, to show up and...
Yeah.
So, two, three weeks into the school year?
Yeah, I would say, I don't know when our first one, so we have one in June, should I, August, September, October, is that?
I think we have one in August. There's the, I wrote this down last time.
Yeah, the June, August.
If you really, if you really want informal input, grab a bottle of wine and come back and buy our free Pink Flamingo, which is this coming Friday night, and it's on Vista.
But then we'll be in violation of Brown Act.
For two people to get there, right?
Question we bribe you.
So, yeah.
No, bring the wine for the other people.
So, we have one in August and one in October. That's, I think, that's right.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yeah, so...
So, is this in place of a regularly scheduled meeting?
Would we, I was going to say, are we going to do a special meeting again?
Well, that's a good question.
I mean, if, if you want the community meeting to be at the school, which I think is a good idea, that would need to be a special meeting, because I wouldn't be here.
Okay. We can have a special meeting.
That probably makes the most sense. Whatever else we need to discuss for the regularly scheduled meeting would probably be, we have the project management.
Or we could like cancel it too.
So, in August...
When does school start, August?
School starts August 15th.
About two weeks after that approximately, two to three weeks.
Um, just, uh, we need to coordinate, um, there's still, I, I don't know when back-to-school night is and you don't want to hold it on back-to-school night, really you don't. So, let me can, I'll, that date, I don't think it's been finalized yet.
Okay.
So, um, let me get back to you on that.
So, you kind of want to get the school, get in this routine kind of a little better?
Yeah, you would, it's just a scheduling issue at the school.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand that.
Because that way you can, as, back-to-school night... Yeah, but whatever back-to-school night is, we could advertise that they're going to be...
Oh, advertise it, yeah, that's a good point.
You know, and, and, you know, beginning of the year, it was like just trying to get settled, maybe like two weeks or so after back-to-school night, so they know, they could put it on their calendar.
Messaging can go out. And then, uh, last year, the principal did mention Safe Routes to School in her presentation. So, it'd just be a matter of, of making sure that we have all that information to her ahead of time.
Do it two to four weeks after back-to-school night.
And away from Fisher, back-to-school night, so you...
There you go.
Exactly.
Is this an interim principal, by the way, or is it a full appointed principal?
She's not an interim, she was hired as a, so hopefully, uh...
And it's her desire to stay there for a long, a long, long time.
That's what she's...
They always tell you that in an interview, but I hope it's true.
Well...
It's a good assignment.
Life happens, but...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's great. So, end of, probably roughly end of August, beginning of September is what the special, the special session would be. One thing to consider would also, if we have the August meeting, would be a good time for us to maybe at least prep and just review an agenda for the community meeting. So that we're prepared, we're ready to answer questions, we're ready to provide kind of here, you know, just to get ourselves organized. So, we should put that on the agenda for our August session. So, June is data analysis, we'll conduct data analysis on our findings and then August will be our prep for the community meeting. And in the interim, we'll do the, the learning journey structural audits, which you la- wonderful ladies will help kind of prepare a guide for us in terms of look fours. And I can kind of map out the areas that might be good spots. Obviously, if you know of other areas, or if there's another hotspot that I miss, please, my, mine is just an offering. But I'll get that out to Jessica to share with everyone also. And we'll do the walk, the, not the walk, the car counts next week, next Thursday?
I'll send a note out to our volunteers.
Tuesday or Thursday, I can do either, whatever you want.
What do you think would be?
Well, it's the Tuesday after Memorial Day, I'd probably do Thursday.
Thank you, all right, there we go. Is it Thursday?
Thursday it is.
Yeah, Thursday, 7:45 to about 8:20, if you're available, you can come, just, if there are two of us standing near each other, walk to the other, walk to the other driveway.
But no pedestrians or bicyclists?
Um, we, did we track that li- I don't remember, I think we just...
Track where people were entering, which I actually think would still be beneficial. Because if we do want to think about this big structural component as a possibility, to just have a sense for where are people coming in? Are they coming from Poppy? Are they coming from Dave's?
Can't we just all track different stuff, even if we're there? Like, you know, somebody counts cars coming in.
If you have enough people, you could, if you have enough people, you could track bike and, and ped counts also and then have somebody at the end count bicycles.
I will, I will volunteer.
You can help too.
What about Whitney, Josh, get the whole team over?
I mean, if we do it, let's try to get as much data as we can.
If you want, I, I'll ask him for next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next Thursday, I'm not doing it.
Next Thursday morning?
We could do a, for a small, a short walk audit around the school as a starting point, as a training. It would be a, you could gather a little bit of information, but it just kind of helps you understand what to look for after the car counts.
Okay.
If that's, if anybody's interested, I'll set aside, I don't know what day of the week that is right now, but...
So, it's a week from this coming Thursday?
Yes.
So, if we have enough people, are we doing a bike and ped count too then? And we know the spots that we should be doing that?
Yes, yeah, we can have the clickers.
We will, we will, we'll work with Karen to set that up, because we have... I, I would forget like what the priorities are, like, we need to get this, we need to get this, we'd like to get this, we really like to get that. But, you know, if we can get enough of us there, let's just do it all.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to, excuse my lack of organization, to send out a reminder a couple of days before the meeting to shake us out of our...
Jessica, our trustee organizer.
So, it's the 30th, right?
Yes. Wow, thank you all so much. What we're here for, right?
This is great, yeah.
Okay, any, anything else if I look on the awesome, I think we've discussed short-term and long-term solutions, which are, we're now going to kind of go out and learn more about some of the ideas that we've talked about. And prioritize them at some point, right now in the fact-finding phase. All right, anything else? Any other?
I'm related to this project, is there anything else for our future agendas? Any burning issues?
I would really like to...
I was going to say, Barry, I am researching the Highway 9 questions that you had, so that is on my radar.
That sounds pretty...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm ignorant on it, but it sounded important.
I think it's important, but I don't have a specific thing right now.
I would really like to, you know, figure out how to explore with the school, doing more of what you're doing where there's drop-offs, whether it's on Winchester and there's those groups of kids that walk together. I'd like to see how we could help set that up or, you know, encourage that.
I'll include you on some of the, just check in with Karen. Because I, yeah, I've been doing a lot of independent thinking and would love some, I think, community to know what, you know, what would go well in Montesereno.
I think a lot of parents, if they could find a place to dump their kids off, that they didn't have to go through this mess, they'd love it, you know? A win-win.
Is there anything with the pavement management project that we will be, that we will need to be updated on next?
I don't think so. I did get, um, I was contacted by the MTC and they, I had an initial meeting with their consultant to redo the whole assessment that they did, uh, two years ago. And so, that probably won't wrap up until December, but they're going to do some street assessments in the late fall.
Did you cover our top priorities that we just prioritized? I'm tired, I don't remember them all. It was the Dave's Avenue, there was the Highway 9. Trying to keep this on track.
Yeah, Dave's, the pavement management.
Right.
Highway 9. The bike and ped, I mean, big ones.
Make sure we're not forgetting anything. Good.
Big ones.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, meeting adjourned at 9:10? Yeah?
So, any, any to participate in any of the Safe Routes to School activities?
Ben, thank you for taking the time to come here.
Oh, no, thank you for inviting us, this is, uh...
No, I haven't.